This is episode 622 of the Rio Grande Foundation's Tipping Point, New Mexico. I'm Paul Guessing. I'm president of the Rio Grande Foundation in Mexico's free market think tank. You can find out more about the foundation at rio grande foundation dot O R G. I'm very pleased to be joined for this week's episode by Rod Montoya. He represents parts of Farmington and San Juan County in the legislature, and also is the newly minted House Republican Minority Leader in the legislature. Welcome to Tipping Point, New Mexico, Rod.
All right. Thank you for having me today. I hope that this is not as disappointing as some of the conversations I have with my CPA.
Well, we'll, we'll find out how it all goes here. Hopefully, the legislative session is not disappointing. We're going to talk about the special session that is coming up next week, starting on July 18th, and you know, going into a few details on that. But before we get down that path, you are now the House Minority Leader, because the previous occupant, also from San Juan County, Ryan Lane, has left his seat. So what I'm getting at is that there were primaries in June. There were a lot of new people running, some people who are retiring. This is the legislature that was elected in 2022. But you are one of the people, even though you've been in the legislature for a while now, you're in a new position because Lane left, abdicated his seat, and so you stepped into that role.
Yes, Ryan was in House District Three, which is, which neighbors me. It borders my district. We actually split Aztec down the middle. But when he stepped down from, not only from his position as leader, but stepped down from the legislature, it set in motion a couple of things. One is, we have a new representative from House District Three, which is Bill Hall. Bill is a retired FBI agent and a former police officer, former military, retired military guy. And then, so after we, after the San Juan County Commission replaced Ryan in the legislature, then we had new leadership election in April, I believe. And I've, I was elected leader at that point.
So before we get started on the special session, what is the role of the House Minority Leader in terms of their party and the legislature at large?
Well, this time of the year, the role of the leader is to go and help win seats, hold on to seats and win seats. That's really the job. After the 30-day session takes place during an election year is, it's all about raising money to hold on to close seats and pick up seats, any of the seats that we can. So that's the job until November. Wasn't really expecting a session to come up, a special session or anything like that. So the role during a session is, obviously, the title is called Floor Leader. So what you're doing is your, your job is to help the caucus move forward in a, in a way with their ideas, the agenda of the constituents of our districts, and try and either pass good laws during that session or, or stop bad laws from being pushed forward.
All right. Well, we know broadly, and I'm interested in your take regarding the special session. We know broadly it is going to be on crime-related issues. We've heard discussion of some of the things that will and won't be on the agenda. Talk about some of those. Have you seen legislative text, for example? Does the governor talk to you? Or are you not in communication with Governor Lujan Grisham on, on regular terms?
Unfortunately, since Governor Lujan Grisham has been governor, any discussions with Republicans are very, very limited. Generally, when she's trying to push a bill through where she might reach out to somebody within the caucus and try and encourage them to support her bill. But that's really about it. There has been virtually no conversation between the governor and Republicans at all. That has just been... She has run her office for the last... But as to the session itself, this special session, assuming it even takes place, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there is a group of 40 progressive organizations that actually sent a letter to the governor and are asking her to not even have the session. If we do have a session, there is no telling what bills would actually be heard, because the governor has laid out a general agenda. But as far as actual bills, you'd asked if we'd seen any text. We've seen some text, but it's been all rejected by Democrat legislators. So what happens is the governor has brought potential bill, potential bills forward to the Courts and Corrections Committee in particular. And virtually every single bill that she's brought forward has been rejected by Democrats sitting on those committees. So I have no idea if there's going to be a drafted bill that has any support whatsoever come Thursday of next week.
But I guess broadly speaking, in terms of some of these crime issues, just based on what you know, are there any things that are inherently objectionable to Republicans? Basically, what I'm seeing and hearing from most Republicans is, we've been pushing on this issue for years and years and years. We've been rejected by the governor. Are these broadly speaking, and I'm not asking you to commit anything, but are they concepts that you think Republicans can work with the governor on? Or would you say that there's issues that you have with a lot of the material that she's talked about?
Well, a felon in possession of a firearm, an enhancement of jail time, that's a Republican idea that's been pushed by Representative Rehm for years. So we're generally in support of that. It's, it, overall, I don't know that that's, that enhancement itself is worth a special session. It's really something that should have been, if this is something that the governor is waking up to now, I'm glad that she's waking up to it. But the reality is, this should have been, this should have been passed through and signed one of the last five or six times we've tried to pass it.
Right.
The reality is, this is probably one of the most objectionable to the progressive Democrats who essentially are in control of both the House and the Senate. It's one of the most objectionable pieces of legislation before them. They're, they've basically said this, this goes nowhere. So outside of that, the idea of doing something for, let's say, aggressive panhandlers standing on the side of the, the road all over Albuquerque, and now it's becoming more prevalent in other cities, because of it being a, what, what the governor is saying is pedestrians are being run over. It happens to be directly correlated to the more panhandlers that are, that are out there. And, but the reality is, in Albuquerque in particular, you have panhandlers stepping into the street, running over three lanes of traffic because somebody's holding up a dollar or a $5 bill. That's really what we're trying to address here. But the reality is, it's unnecessary. There are already laws on the books. There's jaywalking laws on the books. There are solicitation laws, which are, it's interesting, but it was placed in the books for, for, let's say, professional ladies of the night to not step into the road and stop traffic.
Right.
But the reality, those, those laws are already on the books.
Okay.
The issue is, and unfortunately, this, about half of what we're facing is because of an open border that we are not willing to address. So fentanyl is really what's causing a lot of our problems. Just the free flow of fentanyl into our streets is what's exacerbating the mental health crisis. It's what's exacerbating the, the folks who are on the street aggressively panhandling, the folks who are breaking into homes, the folks who are going into stores and stealing, the retail crime that's up. A lot of this is directly related to a very porous border that we have here in New Mexico. Because, well, what's going on is the, the criminal element is coming over those borders. The criminal element is what's utilizing the, the vast openness of about 200 miles of border in New Mexico and Mexico. Most folks are coming in, just going and claiming asylum at our border crossings. So the people don't have anything to hide in their background are the ones who are coming across, you know, and not walk, not coming to a, a border crossing. Part of the problem as well with that is, did a recent tour with the Border Patrol, and about 90% of the officers that work for the Border Patrol are basic, they've basically become, and this is facetious, but in my terms, they've become travel agents. They're just processing asylum seekers and just finding out where they're going, making sure that they have a travel to their destinations. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous what the Border Patrol has become. And what that has meant is virtually, with, with 90%, just doing the math that I learned in New Mexico schools, 90% of those border agents processing folks, that, that means there's only 10, 10% of the agents are actually patrolling the border in New Mexico and trying to keep illegal crossings from happening. So, so the border is, is like I said, about half of the issue. I would say the other half of the issue is the fact that the Albuquerque mayor and the city councilors here in Albuquerque are just unwilling to prosecute the smaller crimes, mostly misdemeanors. A misdemeanor is only being charged if you're pleading down a larger case, you know, a larger charge, or if you happen to be doing a misdemeanor while also doing something more dangerous. When you have this, the, the mayor of Albuquerque instructing the police to not waste their time on a retail theft or a burglary if it's less than $1,000, you can imagine why criminals are feeling emboldened and just walking into stores and just walking out, and why, why home invasions are up in Albuquerque as well. It's, you know, the only thing you have to fear is if the, the homeowner has a gun and has it not locked away and, you know, is ready to use it. So, so, so I would say it's, it's, as far as I'm concerned, half, half of what we need to fix is because the mayor of Albuquerque is just not inclined to enforce robberies of $1,000 or less.
Okay, so we have enhancements for crimes committed with a felony crimes committed with a gun. And you say that that's fine, but not worthy of a special session. This issue relating to keeping pedestrians from occupying medians and begging and doing whatnot. Then there was an involuntary commitment bill, which the governor has pulled, presumably mostly from progressive opposition to it. And if you want to talk about that, but are there other issues that you see being discussed during this session from the governor putting them on the agenda? Is that pretty much, so just those two? Or are there others?
No, there's a, there's a couple of others, and I'm, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering them at the moment, because the governor's not really made a big deal about them. The media has been on the three issues that you've just talked about. But pulling the incarceration, as which they don't really want to call it that, but putting folks in jail who have been deemed mentally incompetent, or putting them into confined treatment spaces, let's say that, I'm trying to use the political...
And that's a tricky issue. Don't get me wrong. I understand the challenge of determining in an objective fashion whether somebody is capable of living and operating on their own. That seems like something that's worth maybe not just a special session or even a regular session, but some kind of real task force and scientific analysis of, if you ask me.
It is worthy of that. The problem is that the bills that have been presented prior to the governor pulling it, those are 35, 40-page bills. Those are not bills that can be digested and debated and, and vetted in a two- or three-day special session. That really does need to take place, if it's going to take place at all, during a 60-day. There, there are constitutional issues, whether or not we can incarcerate somebody involuntarily. You know, that, that is the question. Now, from the standpoint of a special, it, that did not rise to the level as well. Because it only, we're talking that particular group of folks who are committing violent crimes, it's less than 4%. The reality is, what, what we've got is the, the repeat violent offender that is being picked up and for one reason or another is not being able to be held, and then is going right back out on the street and then doing the same thing, and now with impunity. So what we need to deal with, if, if we were to have a special session to go in and try and deal with catch and release, that would be worthy of our time.
So are there, you know, I know the agenda is set by the governor, but apparently some other bills will be put forth. You know, just for people who aren't familiar with the process, how much leeway would the Democrats, so if the Democrats got the idea that they wanted to put something else that the governor maybe didn't want, or Republicans on the off chance that maybe they could get traction with the Democrats? The, the governor sets the agenda, but how much wiggle room is there?
There's a lot of wiggle room. Any, the, it's up to both chambers to, to determine if something is germane. Now, the governor could easily veto that, but anything that, that we determine is germane is germane. So that would be up to the Speaker of the House and, and Peter Wirth, leader in the Senate. So the, interestingly enough, one of the agenda items that we pushed forward as House Republicans, that we have received of kind of a passing mention from the governor's office that might fit into her overall agenda was taking the distribution of fentanyl and applying the federal punishment to it. It's, once again, that's also unnecessary, because if, if law enforcement in New Mexico, and, and once again, it's not law enforcement, the state police works for the governor, the, 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 the city police departments work for the, the mayors, and the sheriff's departments, at least to some degree, report to the people who are controlling our budgets at the county level. The reality is, if we just enforced federal drug laws, the problem is, in our pushing what was called marijuana legalization in New Mexico, really what we did was we passed the unwillingness to enforce federal drug laws on marijuana. That has gone beyond marijuana, and it goes to virtually every other drug. And that is progressives and in the legislature have basically said, we do not want to criminalize addiction. And the result of that is what we see on the streets here in Albuquerque in particular, which is a massive number of folks living on the streets. And whether they're just because they're so addicted to whatever it is that they're taking, or if it's because they have mental health issues and they're self-medicating, it still comes down to the availability of drugs on the street and the unwillingness to hold people accountable for, for possession, much less distribution.
So in, in kind of summarizing your views and position is that the session as understood is not really worth having. So there's some level of agreement with the progressives in that regard. But you'll work with the governor if there are good ideas that make their way to the legislature and, you know, Republicans are willing to essentially play ball. But I'm sure you have other ideas as to what you would like to see. So just sticking with crime, what would you recommend that the governor put on the, on the agenda? And correct me if I'm wrong in any of the way that portrayed that and summarize that.
Well, yeah, well, let me say that if, or let me back up a little further than that. The, the governor is correct in the fact that there is a public outcry because of crime that is out of control. There is an outcry for public, on public safety concerns. So if we were to hold a special session to really address these issues, I'm in 100% agreement with the governor. The problem is, what I've seen is what the governor has presented, and what, even, even what she's presented, that is just still unacceptable to progressive Democrats who are the majority of the, of the legislature. The, the real issue is, if we're going to go in and only pass bills that are redundant, that there are already bills on the books, that are, laws on the books that are being ignored by, in particular, you know, the mayor of Albuquerque, what, putting another, another law out there that is to criminalize panhandling or aggressive panhandling, I, I think that'll just be ignored as well. It's, it, it doesn't, doesn't rise to the level of a police officer taking his time to deal with that, especially if they just write back on the street the, the next day. So passing redundant legislation, that's not worth it. Passing legislation that makes it sound like we're addressing public safety, but is not addressing public safety, that is not worth it. So that being said, we have presented, and, or let me rephrase that. We've presented, just like the governor has, a concept of certain bills that are going to be going forward on opening day. There are bills being drafted, but I would say they, they all fit into several categories. One of them being bills that would enhance New Mexico's effort to secure a border that is wide open. So some of that is just surveillance, that would be able to track license plates. When somebody crosses the border, they're being picked up by somebody and then being driven off. So that, a bill that would go after, in particular, what is now a retail crime that is organized, the, the idea that, that less than $1,000 is not going to be prosecuted, then what you have now is you have teams of folks going in. And it's, it's not just the person who is living on the streets and wants some deodorant and walks out with deodorant. Now what we have is we have people who are organized very well. That, so a bill that would go after organized crime, a bill that essentially would put something in place since, since we're not protecting people in their homes anymore. If it's, if, if $1,000 are left, or, or a, or a dead body is not left behind, we're not going to criminalize that. What we are, what we are proposing is a home invasion bill that would raise the profile of somebody coming into your home. The, the homeowner has no idea why they're there, don't know if they're to, 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 because they want a glass of water or because they want to rape your daughter. Nobody knows that. So that is another bill that we are pushing. We are introducing a felon in possession bill. Representative Rehm has presented that year after year after year, and I think that is going to go forward. So, but the big one that we are going to present, and this is the, this is the main one, and that is, we have to stop catch and release. One of the reasons that the, the police here in Albuquerque are not dealing with, let's say, you know, burglaries of a lesser dollar amount, is because the very, very bad criminals are having to be handled multiple times because they're coming in, they're committing something fairly heinous, and then they're back on the street again. And so the police are dealing with the same criminal again and again and again. That's one of the reasons there's just not enough of them to then take care of a store owner who is having their shelves wiped bare.
Now, certainly, in, in that catch and release issue, there are issues with the judiciary, and I think it's worth putting a fine point on it and saying that no matter how good you are, say you were in the supermajority, you had the best Republican governor, and you passed every bill you wanted, you ultimately can't control what is done in the city of Albuquerque within reason. I mean, you could put some financial penalties or something and say, we're not going to give you any capital outlay until you get serious about crime. I, I, there are solutions, but ultimately, the judiciary and the mayor of Albuquerque in particular, mayor of Los Cruces, mayor of Santa Fe, all need to step up and address the crime issue. Any, any objections to that or anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I, I completely agree. I, I tell you right now, in Farmington, in Hobbs, in Roswell, if, if our police department was instructed by the, by the mayor or by the city council in those cities to, to ignore certain crimes, and people were feeling unsafe in their homes and their vehicles, at the grocery store, at the gas station, and, and they refused to address it, I guarantee you, they would be out on their collective arses.
Now, I want to address the organized retail crime. There was a bill that passed and became law in 2023, HB 234, robbery and organized retail crime. And I thought I'd heard something about this in some media outlet that, that passed the House 62 to 3 and passed the Senate 38 to 0, that's at least theoretically to address the organized retail crime. Is that bill insufficient? And if so, what, what is the shortcoming there?
I think the shortcoming there is that because a, because an individual case of less than $1,000 is being ignored by the police department, how in the world do you even build a case that's organized?
Okay. That, that certainly makes sense. So are there other issues? I mean, I'll throw it open for you. If you were in the governor's shoes and you wanted to have a special session, what would you put on the agenda? Obviously, I think crime's a real issue, but what would you, what would a Rod Montoya special session look like? Or an extraordinary session, I guess you could, you could work on that one.
Well, first off, I, I think it's ridiculous to call a special session unless you have an agenda that has broad support and is addressing an immediate need. Something that, that, I mean, we're, we're, what, six months away from the 60-day session? Anything that has any appropriation that's going to have to be associated with it, that there's going to be a cost to, that really can't be addressed until the 60-day or in the following year, you know, during a 30-day. A regular session is the only time you can really appropriate money outside of the whole budget process, with the exception of the governor's emergency powers to spend. But other than that, which was another reason that whole, the, the concept of pushing forward the, the bill on the, the, addressing the mental health issues, that infrastructure's not in place. That's going to take a huge appropriation. There's no way to address that now. But I, I wouldn't go forward with any special session that you're not able to walk in with a bill that has broad support, has been vetted for several weeks prior to the session. has been vetted for several weeks prior to the session. And then you walk in and it is approved with the vast majority of the legislature, knowing that the governor is going to sign it. And you walk in, you walk out because there, the reality is, we're supposed to do that stuff during the regular sessions. If we're going to, going to do it during a special session, the cost is now, I believe it's over $70,000 a day. If we're going to go in and we don't know what we're doing, it's just a waste of the taxpayer dollars. So, so that is my general thought on a, a, a special session. But if I today were to call a special session, it would be on the two things that I described. Doing something to shore our border, which the governor can do without calling a special session. But if we're going to spend money on, on, you know, or put in concept at least, the idea of putting surveillance a, a, along the, the roads that are along the border, that, that would be worth it, shoring up the border. The other thing that would be worth it for me, if 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 I had a choice in the matter, would be addressing catch and release. Other than that, I I don't know how you force the mayor of Albuquerque or the city council to take crime serious.
So why do you think, and I, I know we don't want to psychoanalyze people because I've spent six years trying to get inside this governor's head and figure out what her reasoning for 99% of the things that she does is. It is, it is odd. I know legislators don't like being called into special sessions during election season. Both parties equally firm on that. It it just seems like an odd thing to do for a governor that's been in office for six years now and really hasn't done anything of real merit to address the crime issue. And she's not running for reelection as governor, at least, maybe she'll do something else. But a, any thoughts on why she's doing this right now?
I, I'm, I'm going to have a hard time psychoanalyzing as well. However, I have had six years of experience with this governor. She, there's no idea that comes out of her mouth, which I think is where they originate, that cannot, that that she will ever say was a mistake. She just has a hard time saying, okay, maybe I was not right. That's very, very hard for this governor to say. I think that she shoots from the hip a lot. And unfortunately, for the last six years, when she was not going into her, into her lame duck last two years, the, there has been very, very little pushback from the legislature. They've allowed the governor to, and I'm talking about progressives who are in control of both chambers. They've been unwilling to push back against this governor at all. A Ben Lujan, a Raymond Sanchez would have pushed back against a Republican or a Democrat if their authority was being usurped. Unfortunately, the previous speakers up to this point in the House and the previous leaders in the Senate have been unwilling to fight for the legislatures, the the body of the legislature, our our autonomy and our authority that exists. That's unfortunate. There are three branches of government, but as it appears, the governor, at least for the last six years, has controlled the legislature as as well. So with that in mind, a governor who shoots from the hip, maybe said something before she thought it all the way through that that she wasn't going to get the support from her side. At this point, it's just, I think, an unwillingness to say, okay, this is not going to work. There is no buy in. She seems to be hell bent on going in and having a showdown and and trying to see if the Democrats who are in charge of both chambers are going to allow her to be embarrassed. Or are they going to potentially put during an election year, their members in an awkward position to not defend the folks who are crying out for some relief from the crime that's taking place?
Yeah, it definitely seems odd to me as an observer of this whole thing that the governor would, if anything, put her own and the progressive Democrats credibility on the line with some of these issues. And, you know, Republicans unfortunately are just kind of along for the ride. I mean, you can certainly highlight issues and discuss them, but you're not in the driver's seat in the legislature. And the governor certainly is also driving the conversation. And she's not interested in Republicans' thoughts and ideas. But seems like we're going to just watch this process unfold and hope for maybe some small amount of progress, but not expecting a whole lot. So any last thoughts before we conclude?
No, I, I just hate the idea that I've come here and talked with you and really don't have answers, even less than seven days away from a special session, because there are no answers to be given. It is, it is clear as mud right now as to what to expect. I would say, right now, the likelihood, if I were a betting man, I would say the highest likelihood that I could predict, which would be as, let's say, 25% would be us walking in, there being no agreement. And rather than floundering that we, that that the, either the speaker or the pro tem or in in the, in the in the Senate gavel down. We we gavel in and sign, die and gavel out and go home. That would be a massive embarrassment to the governor. So I think probably equally, or just maybe a little less than that, a likelihood is that we'll go in, we'll pass some redundant legislation of laws that are already on the books and then watch a ridiculous overexaggeration of what was accomplished, being made by the governor and and some of the Democrats in the legislature. I think those are, I think one of those two is probably, you know, those two together, probably 50% chance of what's likely going to happen.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and let you go. If I had, I'm going to answer my own question. If I had the ability to put stuff on the agenda, I'd say massive tax cuts, massive school choice. I realize these are unrealistic, given the current legislative and gubernatorial situations, but you know, throw in a right to work law for good measure and
I didn't realize you were just asking me for my wish list of all legislation. I I thought you were talking about a special session. I'm sorry, I was in that. That was my mindset.
Hopes and dreams, hopes and dreams, so.
How about a, how about a massive return of taxpayers' dollars?
Exactly. Yeah, that's all of the above. So, all right, well, maybe we'll see up there. Depends on how long things go in Santa Fe. And if not, we'll definitely see you in the new year or before then with elections and all the other exciting things happening in our state. But thanks for listening to this week's episode. Find all episodes at tippingpointnm.com or at the Rio Grande Foundation's YouTube channel. Subscribe to the show at Apple Stitcher or tell Google Home to play Tipping Point New Mexico. Thanks to Path3 Marketing for producing this show.